Hello everybody, back again with another video. Hope you're doing well. Hope your life's going well. Hope this week is going well for you enough that today is going well for you. Today is Sunday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty four. It's about seven o'clock AM Central Standard Time, and I hope you all are having a great weekend. I hope it's been a fun and productive weekend for you. As for me, I'm doing good. Um, my weekend is going well. Um, yesterday I went for a run at the park and also did some grocery shopping as well, so. Pretty productive day for me, at least Saturday. Hopefully today will be the same way. But we're gonna do another Bible study. We're gonna talk about some of the verses that are in Proverbs because I really do believe that Proverbs has a lot of wisdom that can be applied to your everyday life, right? It has a lot of wisdom that can be applied to today's world, today's generation, right? Even though the Bible is a book that was not written during this modern time. You know, it's amazing how many life lessons um we can learn from the Bible. In particular, Proverbs, Proverbs has a lot of wisdom that we can learn from, right? And so let's get straight into it here. So I'm gonna start off Proverbs chapter twenty seven. Uh, verse one, "Don't brag about tomorrow since you don't know what the day will bring." Don't brag about tomorrow since you don't know what the day will bring, right? So you know, this is just giving us the warning to not brag about tomorrow, not necessarily brag about the future. We can be hopeful for the future, hope for the best, but if we're being honest, we don't know what tomorrow is gonna bring. Uh, we don't know what the next thirty minutes will bring, right? So you don't wanna necessarily brag and then you get to that time point, right? You get to tomorrow and you know, none of the things that you were bragging about in the future are actually occurring. You see, so that's just um, some very sound wisdom, right? So we have verse two, "Don't praise yourself, let others do it." And I do believe this um, this verse here, it goes back into um, you know, ego, right? You don't wanna be a person that is praising themselves, right? You want other people to do it. You want to um, be humble, right? You know, when you praise yourself, you have a big ego, uh, you, you know, that that's just not good. That's not good. You want other people to do it. And you yourself, you want to remain humble. Verse three, yeah, remember we're in chapter twenty seven, Proverbs, verse three. "A stone is heavy and sand is weighty, but the resentment caused by a fool is heavier than both," right? Wow. A stone is heavy and sand is weighty, but the resentment caused by a fool is heavier than both. Right? Powerful words right there. You know? Verse four, "Anger is cruel and wrath is like a flood, but who can survive the destructiveness of jealousy?" Right? You don't want to be jealous of other people, right? Jealousy is something that can really mess you up mentally, right? It can really destroy relationships with people, right? Because you know, a lot of times when you're jealous of somebody, right? They can sense that you're jealous even though um, you're not actually saying, hey, I'm jealous. They can sense it, right? You know, it could be something you're saying, it could be something you're doing. But many times um, a person can sense that you're jealous of them. And a lot of times, you know, if you have someone around you, a friend or family member, etc., you can sense when they are jealous of you as well. We have to understand that there's no reason to be jealous, right? You know, I don't know if it, you know, we don't know whether it's because, you know, they have something that you want or vice versa, but there's just no reason to be jealous, right? Be grateful, be thankful uh, for what you have, right? Because you may have a lot of things that other people may want for. You may have a certain trait about yourself, right? That someone may want, so why would you go and be jealous of someone else for what they have? For what they worked hard for, right? We all have varying levels of work ethic. We all have certain traits about ourselves that others may or may not have. We're not all exactly the same. We're not robots. We're human beings. We're all different, right? Some people are gonna have more than others, and that's okay. And that's what you have to understand about life in general, right? So there's no point, no purpose in being uh, jealous of what someone else has. And so jealousy can really be destructive. It can destroy family relationships. It can destroy um, friendships. I mean, we're talking about friendships that have lasted for twenty, thirty plus years. All of a sudden uh, one person gets the sense that the other is jealous of them. That can cause a huge rift in their um, relationship, right? And so don't be jealous, right? Let's see. A person, okay, so I kinda jumped to uh, Proverbs chapter twenty seven, verse eight. "A person who strays from home is like a bird that strays from its nest," right? "A person who strays from home is like a bird who strays from its nest." And we have to understand about this verse here is when you go outside of your home, you know, you live at home and you go out in the real world, there's a lot of unknown. There's a lot of danger, but eventually we're going to have to do it. We can't live with our parents forever, right? Eventually, we're gonna have to go out there and face those dangers, right? Just like a bird, right, that lives in a nest, right? Eventually, that bird is going to have to go out into the real world. It's gonna have to fly away and make its own way. There's a lot of danger out there for a bird, right? But eventually, it's going to have to happen. And you have to understand that um, there's a time, you know, you still live with your parents. It's gonna be a time where you have to go out there in the real world and face the um, the dangers, face the unknown. That's the big one, the unknown. And that's something that, something that a lot of people have a fear of. They fear the unknown. And so they don't necessarily want to get up and go out of the confines of their parents' home, right? They want to um, stay in the home, right? They want to um, not face the reality that eventually they're going to have to go out in the real world. A bird understands this. Us humans should understand that. Let's see. Verse nine. "The heartfelt counsel of a friend is as sweet as perfume and incense." And in this verse here, it's basically saying that um, if you have a friend that is supportive of you, you have a friend that really cares for you, right? They're not necessarily gonna tell you what you want to hear. They're gonna tell you what you need to hear, right? Someone who's there for you. They're saying it is as sweet as perfume and incense. There's a lot of fake friends out here. There's a lot of fake people out here that will watch you fall. They secretly want you to fall, but a true friend that is not gonna tell you what you want to hear, that is gonna tell you what you need to hear is as sweet as perfume and incense, right? The heartfelt counsel of a friend, right? Someone who will be there to help you and guide you through certain situations through their knowledge. Maybe they went through the same thing that um, you have gone through, right? Maybe they have a greater understanding of a certain situation that you're going through because they have uh, gone through this situation before. They understand that okay, this is what it takes to get out of this situation. This is what you need to be doing, right? In order to better yourself. The heartfelt counsel of a friend. That's what they're saying. Right? Let's see. We'll find a good verse here. Let's see. Oh, this is a good one. Proverbs chapter twenty seven, verse nineteen. "As a face is reflected in water, so the heart reflects the person." I'mma repeat that one. This is a very important uh, verse here. "As a face is reflected in water," right? You go to, you know, you go fill up your sink with water. You're gonna see your face in it, right? You you know, you lean over, you have a light above, you're gonna see your face. Or you know, you go down to a river or something, you look over, you see your face reflected from the water. "So the heart reflects the person." So someone's heart is a reflection of the person. If you have a good heart, you have good intentions. That's a reflection of a good person. If you have a bad heart, you have bad intentions, evil intentions, right? That is a reflection of a bad person. And that's something that we have to um, understand, right? Verse twenty, next verse. "Just as death and destruction are never satisfied, so human desire is never satisfied." I mean, we can easily relate that to today's world, right? Because I mean, just think about money. Think about this fiat currency that we have in today's society. Isn't it true that it seems like we never have enough money? We always want more money. We always need more money, right? We always want more of this, more of that. We always want the latest and greatest everything. Human desire is never satisfied, right? We need to do this. We need to do that, right? We want this bigger and better, you know, bigger house, bigger car, right? Better car, I mean, um, right? Human desire is never satisfied, right? Next verse, verse twenty one. "Fire tests the purity of silver and gold, but a person is tested by being praised." What's being said in this verse here is a true test is to see how you react when you're being praised. Do you have a big ego? Do you have, are you gonna let that get to your head, right? It happens with some people. Once they start getting praised, they start getting recognition. They let the praise, they let the recognition get into their head. And that's why it's being, you know, you're being tested when you're being praised, right? When people are saying good things about you, are you going to be humble? Or are you gonna let that get into your head, right? Are you going to let the praise gas you up? Or are you gonna be humble about the praise? Be thankful, be grateful for the praise that others are giving you, right? It's definitely a good verse there. Let's see. Let's see, let's see. I'm trying to find a good one here. Ooh, this is good. So we're gonna go to Proverbs chapter twenty eight. Um, verse six. "It is better to be poor and honest than rich and crooked." This is a very important verse, and we can easily relate that to today's world because there are many rich and crooked people out here, right? Many of them, but the sad part is we have been brainwashed into thinking that because someone is rich, someone has more fiat currency than us, that we are to praise him, that we think that they're better people than us simply because they have more money than us. Keep in mind, they are a human being just like you watching, just like me, right? Just because they have more money, more currency, right? It does not mean they're better than us, right? So and and a lot of these rich people, they do a lot of crooked things. And it's telling us that it's better to be poor and honest than rich and crooked because in the end that poor and honest person has a more pure heart than someone who is rich and crooked. If you're rich and crooked, you don't have a pure heart. You don't have good intentions. You are crooked. And you being rich is meaningless in that sense, right? Let's see. Let's go to verse seven. "Young people who obey the law are wise. Those who seek out worthless companions bring shame to their parents." This is definitely a true verse because um, there's many young people that are wise. You know, they don't do all this foolishness that they see other people do. And in today's generation of social media, in today's generation where we don't have a lot of um, you know, a lot of people lack common sense. They just blindly go and follow behind um, worthless companions that they seek out. You know, they may have friends that do silly stuff. And now here you are, not having any wisdom. You just go, go blindly follow behind them and do whatever silly stuff they do and end up getting in trouble, right? And you're gonna bring shame to your parents, like they say, right? Young people who obey the law are wise. You always wanna be a wise person. Those who seek out worthless companions, you know, bad friends, friends who are into, you know, committing crimes and, you know, just doing bad stuff to other people. They bring shame to their parents. And I think that a lot of um, young people need to read this verse because there's a lot of young people that are doing uh, bad stuff out here. They're constantly stressing their parents out because their parents are um, simply doing the best they can to raise them up the right way, but they're constantly bringing shame to their parents because they are following behind worthless companions, bad friends, friends who commit crimes, friends who um, you know, just do bad things to people, do the wrong thing, right? Gossiping, right, etc. Worthless companions, they bring shame to their parents. You have to understand that if you're a young person watching. Be wise. You know right from wrong. Don't find, don't blindly follow behind what your friends are doing. Let's see. Let's see. We find a good one here. Verse eighteen, chapter twenty eight, we're in Proverbs, Proverbs chapter twenty eight, verse eighteen. "The honest will be rescued from harm, but those who are crooked will be destroyed." So if you're someone who's crooked, right? You're someone who is not honest. See, the honest will be rescued, but the crooked will be destroyed. So don't be crooked, right? Let's see. Chapter twenty, I mean, verse twenty, we're in chapter twenty eight. "The trustworthy will get a rich reward, but the person who wants to be, wants to get rich quick will only get into trouble." Right? Read that again. "The trustworthy will get a rich reward, but the person who wants to get rich quick will only get into trouble," right? We can relate that to today's world, right? Person, you know, there's a lot of get rich quick schemes out here. And a lot of times, there's just really no such thing as getting rich quick. I mean, except for the lottery, right? Except for the lottery, I mean, you can get rich quick doing that, but usually with all these get rich quick schemes, they're scams, they're gonna get you into trouble, whether it's financial trouble, whether it's legal trouble, etc. There is no such thing as fast money that won't get you into trouble, that won't get you, you know, caught up financially, legally, morally, most importantly, morally. A lot of these people who get rich real quick, they're doing something immoral. That's what you have to understand, right? "The trustworthy will get a rich reward." And so be trustworthy. You want people to trust you, right? You don't wanna be the person that has the reputation of being untrustworthy. Um, trust is something that it it's powerful, right? You start off not trusting people because trust is something that has to be earned, you know? So you start off not trusting people, right? Because if you go out and just trust any old body, you're definitely going to get burned, right? Mentally. Because they are going to take advantage of that, right? Well, certain, I mean, not everybody, but certain people will definitely take advantage of the fact that you have entrusted them without properly vetting them first, right? Let's see. "A greedy person tries to get rich quick," oh no, this is verse twenty two. "A greedy person tries to get rich quick, but it only leads to poverty," right? So many times. you know, because of our greed, because of our want to get rich quickly, we end up losing money, right? Think about um, some of these you know, and I'll be honest, some of these penny stocks out here, some of these uh some, some of these cryptocurrencies out here. A greedy person tries to get rich quick, you throw all your money into some random penny stock and all of a sudden it goes down a few cents and all of a sudden you've lost thousands and thousands of dollars. It's a bad investment, you don't want your greed to take over, you don't want that, right? That's what happens a lot of times, right? It just leads to poverty, it leads to you um, losing money. You know, your greed is going to lead you into taking a lot of risk. Right? It's gonna lead you into screwing people over because you're greedy. It's just an end in you being in poverty, right? And even, I mean, let's say you actually made that money, you're still in poverty, right? Because your heart is unpure, your heart is evil, right? When you get rich off of you know, messing other people over. There's a lot of rich people today whose hearts are unpure, whose hearts are in poverty, you see? Let's see. Trying to find a good one here. Hmm, this is a good one. Let's jump to chapter twenty-nine, we're in Proverbs. Chapter twenty-nine, verse twenty. There is more hope for a fool than for someone who speaks without thinking. There is more hope for a fool than someone who speaks without thinking. Think before you speak, right? You definitely want to think before you speak because once you um, say something, you can't take that back, you can't unsay something. And words have the potential to be extremely hurtful and you know, the tongue is very powerful, words are powerful. You definitely have to understand that when you speak and you don't think about what you're saying, you don't know the type of mental, the type of psychological damage that what you're saying is doing to someone else, right? And that's why it is very important to really be careful about what you're viewing on social media because you know, people put these opinions out there and they don't understand what they're doing to people, they don't understand that what they're saying is very hurtful, right? And I see this a lot when you know, especially on social media when you have you you have a lot of just negative stuff being said about people in general, oh, this person doing this, this person is doing that. You know, then they start name calling, etc, right? And it's all posted on social media, all that negativity, all that toxicity on social media. Uh, we have to be careful about that because when you're on social media, you're viewing that, you're viewing what all these people are saying, you have to understand. Relating about to this verse, they are not thinking before they speak, right? They're just talking, right? They're not using logic and common sense before they speak. They're just going on a rant. They're mad and they're letting their anger speak for them instead of thinking, right? So that's just you have to understand. Let's see. A hot-tempered person starts fights and gets into all kinds of sin. I've jumped to verse twenty-two here, we're in chapter twenty-nine, Proverbs. A hot-tempered person starts fights and gets into all kinds of sin, right? And you don't wanna be that person that is hot-tempered or hot-headed, as they say in today's society, right? That person that, you know, gets angry at every little thing. They have to be right all the time or they're gonna get mad, etc. Any little thing will set them off, right? They start fights and they get into all kinds of sin. Don't be that person. They let their anger, they let their hot-temperedness get them into fights, committing sin. You know, a lot of times in today's society, we see a hot-headed person, they're in and out of jail because they couldn't control their anger. They couldn't control their emotions, right? They started a fight with somebody, they they did something violent, etc, because they were hot-tempered, they were hot-headed, they could not control their anger, their rage. They were a hot-tempered person and that led to them being who they are. Now, we see this on the news all the time, two people get in an argument, one person decides to be a fool and, you know, pull out a weapon, etc. And you know what happens next, one person ends up in prison for the rest of their life, the other person ends up deceased. That's what happens when you have a hot-tempered person that can't control themselves, that is, you know, angered easily. So, please definitely control your temper, definitely control your tone, right? Let's see. Let's go next to verse twenty-three. Pride ends in humiliation while humility brings honor. Pride ends in humiliation while humility brings honor. You don't wanna be prideful, right? You don't wanna be too like prideful. You want to be humble, you want to you know, just be humble, you know, you don't wanna be too prideful. Let's see. Find a good one. Verse twenty-seven in chapter twenty-nine, the godly despise the wicked. The wicked despise the godly. That's a good, good verse right there, right? If you're a godly person, you know, you're somebody that wants to do the right thing, you're gonna despise wicked. And, you know, they're just saying it's vice versa. The wicked despise the godly. Let's see, let's see. I'm just trying to find a good one here. Let's see. So, Proverbs. Chapter thirty-one, verse nine. Yes, speak up for the poor and helpless and see that they get justice, right? You see someone being mistreated, speak up, you know? Let them know that the way they are being treated is wrong. Speak up for the poor and helpless and see that they get justice. Let's see. We'll kinda jump around a little bit here. Let's see, chapter eleven, so we're in Proverbs, chapter eleven, verse seven. When the wicked die, their hopes all perish for they rely on their own feeble strength. When the wicked die, all their hopes perish for they rely only on their own feeble strength, right? And what this verse is saying is that when the wicked die, they're not gonna have anyone to rely on, right? They're going to um have to rely on their own strength, they're not gonna have anybody there to help them. Their hopes are gonna all go away, right? You know, so don't be a wicked person, right? Be a good person, have a good heart, have a pure heart, have pure intentions. Chapter eleven, verse twenty-four. It is possible to give freely and become more wealthy, but those who are stingy will lose everything. So, there's verse is saying, you know, don't be a stingy person, you know, if you have something to give, why not, right? You know? Be a giving person, be a giver, right? That's all they're saying. Let's go to chapter eleven, verse twenty, and we're in Proverbs. The Lord hates people with twisted hearts, but he delights in people who have integrity, right? You know, someone who's trustworthy, someone who's honest, right? Delights in people like that, right? But the Lord hates people with a twisted heart. Someone who does evil, someone who does wrong. The Lord hates people like that. Right? Chapter eleven, verse twelve, in Proverbs. It is foolish to belittle a neighbor. A person with a good sense remains silent, so it doesn't matter, let's say you're in some sort of disagreement with your neighbor. You don't wanna belittle them, right? And a neighbor, I mean, that could really be anybody around your community, not just somebody that lives in your neighborhood. You don't belittle people. Someone with a good sense will remain silent, even if, okay, they're thinking, you know, this person is this or that, you don't want to verbally belittle them, right? You don't wanna scoop down to that level, right? And so, yeah. But we are at the forty-five minute mark, we'll bring this video to a close. I really hope that you enjoyed this video here, I hope it was relaxing and I hope that it did inspire a thoughts. Thank you for watching and have a great Sunday.